See if you got hurt or see if you're.
Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the city council meeting for Monday, April first, twenty twenty four to order. At this time, if I can invite Pastor Jake Kim from First Presbyterian Church, Kankakee.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we are here again in your presence. I pray for these leaders of Kankakee. And please be with them, Lord. They are not the one chosen by human vote, but you chose them for this city. Please be with them. Give them your wisdom and knowledge. They have many plans to make this city better. Best place in this country. So help them go through all those plans with your knowledge, your power, and your wisdom. Help them overcome all the obstacles and difficulties with your provisions and your plan. In your name I pray. Amen.
City Council leaders and pleaders.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the vision of justice for all.
At this time, we have public comments. Please give your aid and direct your comments to the mayor. Comments are limited to three minutes. No personal attacks upon council members, staff, or the person who attended or accident will be permitted. In addition, discussions of matters which are currently under legal review will be permitted. First up, we have Carl Greber.
Eddie Klein.
Mr. Don Ballmer.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thanks for giving me this opportunity to speak. I reside at nine nine five South Wildwood, Kankakee, Illinois. I'm here this evening to draw attention to an issue that I'm not exactly sure is within the domain of this work, this group. However, I thought it important to at least provide some discussions, some awareness of it. I'm referring to an article that appeared in the March twenty eighth Wall Street Journal. The title of the article is "Beating the Squatter Epidemic." I realize that there are considerable laws that protect tenant rights. This article is referring to actions that other legal entities, state entities, are taking to address the issues of squatters. I'll try to read a few of these points made in this article and keep my, my comments to two, three minutes. And then if I, if I may, I'd like to approach the mayor to pass this off, to hand him this article. Okay. I found that there is a law, this is from a Venezuela migrant outlining his plan for invading a house in the United States and taking it from the owner. I found out that there was a law that says that if a house is not inhabited, we can seize it. Naturally, this went viral. The young migrant might have chutzpah, but he's gaming out the border, the border abdication. And crazy enough, he's not wrong about his home invasion scam. Squatters are moving into people's homes uninvited. And once they're, they're in, it's almost impossible to, to dislodge. Last week in New York, when Adely Endohor tried to rent the house she inherited from her parents of squatters by changing the locks, the cops let her away in handcuffs. The squatters could still make themselves at home. It happened all over. In Georgia, another owner found squatters had moved into his home while he was away caring for a sick relative. In Houston, a school teacher and her family used a fake lease to occupy a Houston home. In California, another took his mother's, retook his mother's house by moving in when the squatters were out, and then claimed squatters' rights himself. Two squatters were arrested in, on Friday related to a murder of another landlord when she confronted them at her late mother's Manhattan apartment. Numbers are hard to come by. Been a survey taken last fall of its members who own single-family rental homes. There had been found twelve hundred homes taken over in squatters in Atlanta, four hundred and seventy-five in Dallas-Forth Worth, and a hundred and twenty-five in Orange County, Florida. The more and more, and I'll conclude here, more and more states and cities are looking into ban, and again, I point out, more states and cities should look to ban squatters so migrants don't think they can cross the border and take up residence in your home when you're visiting your relatives.
Jim Griffin. You heard me all.
Good evening. My name is Eric Alves Desa, project development manager with Nexamp Solar. I'm here as the applicant for the Waldron Road solar application that is in front of the council for rezoning, a use permit in a variance. And I just wanted to let you know that our team is here tonight to answer any questions that the council may have as they consider this proposal. We look forward to working with this community and bringing this investment to the city of Kankakee. Nexamp is not just the applicant, but will be supervising the construction and serving as a long-term owner and operator throughout the multi-decade lifetime of the project. We think that there's a lot of benefits that it brings to the city, most notably an increase in tax revenue without any additional demand on public service, on public services. It's a very low-impact, no-noise, no-lights development in a project parcel that is got a lot of industrial uses alongside, adjacent to it, and hasn't seen any opportunity for investment or development over the past couple of decades. So we think that this project is going to be of great benefit to the city. We were last here a couple of weeks ago and heard comment from the community and the public and in the conditions of the use permit that we will be working hand-in-hand over the next couple of months to go through the detailed design in a way that we are addressing or enhancing the landscaping along Waldron Road to improve the aesthetics of the project, as well as going through detailed stormwater engineering to ensure that the drainage issues that are present today are going to be in, are going to be improved post-project. So just wanted to let you know that again, myself as the applicant, our civil engineer, Stan Tech, and our land use counselor are here tonight, happy to answer any questions. And we look forward to working with the city, not over just the coming months prior to potential construction, but over again, the course of the lifetime where our, we are in partnership with the city as the long-term owner and operator. Thank you.
We also have Alexis McCullough. Would you want to speak tonight? Somebody else in the project?
My name is Alexis McCullough. I'm sixteen years old, and I'm a sophomore at BBCHS. I've lived in the community throughout my entire life, and I'm a local musician, athlete, and scholar. And I just wanted to be able to present about my Eagle Scout project that I'm going to be doing for scouts. And I'd just like to say thank you to Mayor Curtis and the council members for providing me the opportunity to speak today. I'm currently a member of Troop Three Nineteen G, which is located in St. George. And throughout my scouting career, I've had the opportunity to learn a lot of new things. And I don't have my sash with me, but if I did, I have thirty-eight merit badges. And I've spent about four years working up to my Life Scout, and I'm currently working to complete my Eagle Scout. For, in order to get your Eagle Scout, you need to complete an Eagle Scout project. And for my project, I will be bringing a Gold Star Family Memorial Monument to the community. My father, Colonel Mark McCullough, served in the Army since he enlisted at eighteen years old. He deployed on multiple occasions such as Desert Storm and Desert Shield through Iraq, Kuwait, and other deployments. Four years ago, my father, Colonel Mark McCullough, passed away unexpectedly while on duty. And since he passed, I've been grieving as I never had the opportunity to say goodbye. Once I, once my father passed, I became a Gold Star Family member. A Gold Star Family member is someone who's experienced the loss of a loved one while serving active duty in the armed forces. There are many organizations which help Gold Star families after their losses. A few years ago, I had the opportunity to drop, travel down to Florida through the Gary Sinise Foundation, Snowball Express. And I had the opportunity to meet other Gold Star families from around the nation. And I was also connected with many different resources. And once I traveled back home, my mom and I were able to look for other ways to help Gold Star families, and we came across the Woody Williams Foundation. The Woody Williams Foundation was created by Herschel Woody Williams, who served in the Marines for twenty years, delivering Western Union telegrams to inform Gold Star families of their losses. He fought in the Battle of Iwo Jima and received a Congressional Medal of Honor. And from these experiences, he was inspired to create the Woody Williams Foundation, as he never wanted us to forget the sacrifices made by Gold Star families. The mission of the Woody Williams Foundation is to honor, recognize, and serve Gold Star families and the legacy of their loved ones who have paid the ultimate sacrifice. And from the moment that I approached the Village of Bourbonay in Mary Shore about the project, I felt that they would have vested interest. And between his involvement, providing land and giving me the opportunity to present and speak for the community, in front of the community, I feel that we, as a committee, will be able to complete this project. Now I would like to talk more specifically about the details of the monument. The monument itself is cut from black grit, black granite, which is imported from India. And there are four pillars on the monument which tell a story featuring imagery and wording which include sacrifice, representing the sacrifices made by Gold Star families, patriot, representing those who support and defend our nation through selfless service, family, representing the brave spirit of military families, and finally homeland, which represents our home, family, friends, and our community. And it's going to take approximately eight months for the granite to be cut and designed to be custom for our community. So I'm hoping that I'm able to raise the correct amount, raise the amount of funds in order to get the monument placed as soon as possible. The cost of the monument will be approximately one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And we're currently standing at about twenty-two thousand dollars as I started raising funds this past summer. And I'm hoping to have sixty thousand raised before October of this year. So then we can hopefully install the monument by Memorial Day of twenty twenty-five. Finally, I would greatly appreciate your support to bring the Gold Star Family Memorial Monument to our community. More information about the monument can be found on the McCullough Gold Star Project Facebook page, where there are weekly updates, and there are links that can take you directly to the donation website, as well as links that can take you to more information about the monument itself. And if there's any questions, I'm available. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we will modify by vocal. City Council?
Jones.
Present.
Noble.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Evaris.
Here.
Swanson.
Present.
Tally.
Here.
O'Shea.
Here.
Tally.
Here.
O'Shea.
Present.
O'Brien.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Hello Marshall.
Crew.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Harvyn S.
Kidwell.
Here.
LaRoche.
Here.
Kubel.
Present.
Landler.
Present.
Taylor.
Lopez.
Here.
Newman.
Here.
Degash.
Present.
Nelson.
Here.
Beasley.
Here.
Hoffman.
Here.
Crosswell.
Drew Watson.
Here.
Thank you.
Next is item six minutes. Is there a verbal for the minutes for Monday, March eighteen, twenty twenty-four?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alvin Ocinga. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a second from Alvin Tally. Is there any questions, comments, changes, or additions to the minutes? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble. Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Evaris.
Aye.
Marja.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tally.
Aye.
O'Shea.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Crew.
Aye.
Thirteen I, zero X.
The minutes for Monday, March six, March eighteen, I'm sorry, March eighteen, twenty twenty-four are approved. Next is item seven petitions, item seven A.
PB twenty twenty-four dash two dash four A, an ordinance approving a map amendment to rezone the east side of Waldron Road just north of Grace Christian Academy from our one single-family residential to C one neighborhood commercial.
This is on your agenda tonight. This has been asked and placed on first reading tonight. Item seventeen.
PB twenty twenty-four dash two dash four B, an ordinance granting a conditional use permit to allow for the construction and operation of a ground-mounted, mounted solar energy system, solar farm, to Waldron Road Solar LLC.
Again, this is on the first reading tonight, but we do have the contractor and developer for this project here tonight. Is there any questions you or anybody else would like to ask while they're attending tonight?
I would just like to know why they picked this particular area.
Is there a representative from a company that would like to come forward and address questions? I don't see a question now, but questions?
I did. Yes, thank you, yes. My name is Jim Griffin. I'm here also on behalf of the applicant. This area was selected for a variety of reasons. I mean, from a, one, from a land use standpoint, you had available acres that were sufficient to provide for this size project. And the land has been undeveloped for, for many years. It's currently just used for farm ground. And so it's taxed as farm ground. So this project would significantly increase the taxes. The other thing is it's located close to the transmission line, which the project's electricity will feed into. So that's what you're looking for, for a project, available land, and also the ability to put that, the energy that's produced by the project into the grid, and that those lines are adjacent to the project. The other part about the project that, or this area that made it attractive, and we thought appropriate for a solar project, is it is bordered on one side by industrial uses zoned in the county. And that's including a rock crushing and recycling facility. And so we think that the proximity of this land to that type of use really makes it undesirable for residential development as it's currently zoned. And this also will then provide a transitional use in between that industrial and then the residential and church uses, which are also adjacent on the other side of the property. So that was a thought process beside, besides, as far as selecting this site.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, thank you. You know, one thing that I'm really, that bothers me a lot about this, you know, farmland is very, very important to me, and you can never get it back, you know? And I like the residential impact over there because, you know, one thing, I've been up and down the road, and a lot of the, there's been some concerns from the residents of what it would be. We're talking the long-term effect. And we're not just talking about, you know, for the next couple of years. It's going to be there. And the long-term effect is what will it really look like with everything that we've got going on? I like the residential impact, and I think that's why we're there. And I like the farmland because, you know, you can never get it back once it's done. And there is a place that I don't know if y'all have thought about, just just something I'm going to throw out there, where you would have probably way less impact because it's already available, is the old goo battery place where, so I believe it's roughly about thirty acres out there. And you will have no impact in terms of the land, because I don't even know exactly what's going to happen with the place based upon what's, you know, under the ground. That would be an idea for me, but that's, you know, and I know with the drainage and all of that there, that's a real impacted area that we come in and out of a thorough fire away. And then, you know, I heard some of the other night how we want to take care of the granary and all of that. And, and, and I don't know if that's really what we really need for the next twenty years. And we're not, and that's what I wondered about. I always look at, I got to look long-term. You know, it's not a two-year deal and then, okay, you know, we got to do this again. And it's not a do-over. We're locked in for twenty years. And, you know, we do have a solar farm in our ward already. And I want, I wanted us to really look at it. Let's, let's, let's really revisit it and give all of the residents even coming down the impact on the homes. Is the value going to grow up? We don't know how that's going to be, you know? You know, of course, I love the idea of the tax revenue, but you got to look at the land, you know? And the land is really, really important. And once, because once it's gone, there is no more farmland. And, you know, that's some of the things that, you know, maybe from some of the farmers that I've spoken to, of course, you know, farmers going to be in, in terms of that. And I, I was wanting to hear more about that and, and to just see if we really need it right there. If there's somewhere else, so we might be looking at something else. Because I would have loved to have seen, I heard the residential impact, because it'll go, it'll go right with what's already there. You know, Walden Road is, is beautiful. The school is right there. And I don't know the long-term effect it may have on the, on the children at the school and everything. So that's something that was on my mind, you know, that, you know, that I need to settle on. That's to give you an idea of where I'm at.
Right. And we do propose a landscape screening plan for the project that would be around the perimeter of it and provide some screening. These solar panels that are used are the same solar panels that go on people's houses. So they're, they're very safe. And, and so, you know, there should be and there will be no negative impact on the community from that perspective. And, and so, you know, with the screening, we think, and with the low impact, we do think it would be a good neighbor to the nearby properties that are there. Do you want to add anything, Eric?
Okay, my name is Eric Alves Desa with Nexamp Solar. I think you bring up a lot of really good points, Mr. Jones. And I'm going to try to, I'm going to try and address a few of them, particularly the first one about why here. When we first looked at the city of Kankakee and surrounding areas for potential solar sites, we looked at proximity again to existing distribution lines, because that is obviously a major factor for where to site a, a solar project. And we did a lot of outreach via mail campaigns and origination throughout multiple large landholders in the area. We got a certain amount of, you know, responses back. And we entered into an agreement with this landowner a couple of years ago on the basis of he's held this land for, I think, almost twenty years now, and has not had many viable opportunities to develop it. So he has sought and has been interested in doing residential development. I believe that there was something that came in front of the city in the late aughts that fell through. And since then, he hasn't had any opportunity or anybody interested in developing it into residential. Being adjacent to the railroad tracks, next to the concrete crushing and recycling plant, I completely hear you. On one side, Grace Christian Academy, the homes on Waldron Road, and also the Redeeming Life Ministries Church is one setting. And then you've got the highway. And then on the other, you've got industrial uses. So it, it is a mixed bag, for sure. And what we're trying to do in our designs and what we're committing to do in the next phase, if we're lucky enough to move forward, is going to be to make sure that landscaping is adequate, so that it beautifies it to the extent possible for those that are going to be passersby. In the last meeting, we talked about Green Giant Arbiviti, changing the chain link fencing along Waldron Road to also have black vinyl coating in order to address some of those concerns. I do think that there was pretty lengthy discussion in the last meeting addressing not just questions from the planning board, but also members of the public. And are there any other outstanding ones? I think I tried to get to most of the ones that you mentioned.
No, no, that, that, that was pretty well. But I, I want to do a little bit more with the residents in the area. I know they may not be city residents, but, you know, we're, we're big, we're just a big town, but we're a small town. And we want to make sure that it's something that will be conducive to the, right, because they're right outside in the county. So we go, we go, as we would say, both ways. So that, that was one of the things that, I've spoken to some already, and it wasn't all, you know what I mean? So, but I'm not wanting to shoot it down until I, I do my due diligence for y'all, as well as the city and, you know, and the residents. So I wanted, I wanted to be honest with you tonight.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up. We did do outreach to Grace Christian Academy. There's been a couple, there's been correspondence back and forth, and I think
I'm aware of that, yeah.
They provided, you know, their lack of objection to the project. They said that it was okay as long as that we weren't, that we were being very mindful of the drainage.
Right.
We spoke at length about how a solar project in taking ground that is actively tilled and that is farmed year over year, but now planting native ground seed cover with pollinator plants will actually serve to better retain water over time. And again, we have our civil engineer here that can speak to those drainage concerns better. We also heard comments from, I think, three or four, I think, three neighbors. Last time around, I left my card with each one of them and encouraged them to reach out to me afterwards. I haven't gotten any correspondence. And had also spoken at length with the members from Redeeming Life Ministries Church, both owner of the property and the current, I guess, lessor renter. And we're open to continue to answer any questions and engage with the community. But we do think it was like a pretty thorough discussion last time, and don't want to just necessarily like relitigate the same points.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just, it, it was quite lengthy meeting on the, on the planning board, but there was a lot of questions that were brought up. And, you know, I, I wasn't a big fan of the, you know, the farm fence and, you know, the chain link fence was addressed. But I think the community solar
community solar aspect of it, it goes whatever this produces, it goes directly back into some of the local residents that sign up for that, correct?
That's right. And we have an expectation that those that do subscribe would have up to 10 to 15% savings on their electricity bills month over month. One of the considerations for the special use permit is for us to offer like preferential subscription to those who are adjacent and we're gonna seek to do that to the best that we can.
I don't recall the economic impact, you know, far as taxes go and what you guys are gonna generate and that would go back into the local coffers. Do you have a number on that?
Yeah, the number that we presented last meeting was around $20,000 in the first year as an improvement versus the current tax base. A large portion of that'll go to the city of Kankakee School District, a large portion of that'll go to the city itself. And that is thanks to the, you know, this is a multi-million dollar investment in a construction project, bringing something here for the next 20 years at minimum, but likely 40 years. And that reminds me, sorry to convert back to Mr. Jones, but the the aspect of it being forever. Community solar and solar projects in general are a really unique development in the sense that they are not forever. They are temporary. So in terms of the long-term vision, we already have assigned and executed an agreement with the Illinois Department of Agriculture called Agricultural Impact Mitigation Agreement that in our design in our design criteria and design standards, our construction means and methods and also our operating and maintenance of the site over time, we need to respect the land and at the end of the project, remove everything, dismantle it, including underground components and return the return and rehabilitate the land so that it can continue to be farmed again in the future afterwards.
And that's a 20-year minimum, right, pretty much?
20-year minimum, potentially up to 30 or 40 years. There was also a question earlier tonight, just in the hallway, and I'll mention it because it is relevant, but a question of when construction would start. At the very earliest, construction would start sometime in second quarter of next year and last six to nine months, of which there's a three-month portion which is more active traffic, but on a daily basis. And then, once the project is actually in operation, there's probably one visit a month, either for maintaining the vegetation, mowing, or checking on the system itself from an electrical capacity and system performance. But it's, once it's there, it's behind the screening and it's quiet, there's no lights, it's a good neighbor.
What about that sheep aspect? Did I hear that right about vegetation? What was I what was I hearing that night? I didn't hear it because I had some I don't know. What were we talking about? What were the sheep gonna do if we were to help?
The area with the area within the project fence, which is 18 acres where the solar array rows are, the new ground seed and grasses that are going to be underneath the panels are going to be a pollinator mix of native species. With that growing kind of year on or, you know, week to week, month to month, there's two ways to maintain that vegetation, either by mowing it, the traditional method, or bringing in a sheep herder who brings who brings a flock of sheep and they chew and munch and eat the grass. And they do that actually in a way that pulls up the roots so that they have to be on-site less than traditional mowing that just kind of whacks it off of the top. Right now, at this stage, we're early, it's still in a conceptual nature. We have not made a decision on which one or the other. We typically ask the municipalities that we work in just for flexibility to pursue either. If for one reason or another sheep are not of interest, that's okay, we go with traditional mowing. We think that there's a lot of benefits to maintaining the vegetation via sheep because you don't have the noise of the mowers. I mean, honestly, it's just interesting and it's cute and especially with Grace Christian, a K through 12 school across the way, it could be a partnership opportunity with environmentally-minded But that's something that we'll work through in more detail, again, during the detailed site design and landscaping reviews.
Do you know approximately what the construction phase will be?
Yeah, at any given time, there would probably be around 30 workers on-site at maximum. The majority of the trades would be sourced regionally. And so there's probably unique workers on-site throughout the course of construction as different trades come in and mobilize out like they on the order of 150 to 200 individual construction workers.
Any other comments or comments?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
This time, we move on to item 7C.
PV 2024-2-6, an ordinance approving a zoning zoning text amendment, including changes to Chapter 2 definitions and rules definitions and rules to add several definitions, Chapter 11 signs regarding law signs and vision triangles, and Appendix A permitted and conditional uses by zoning district.
Mr. Altman, do you want to do a quick update on this?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Happy to. So this is going to add several uses to our zoning book in the appendix where we list out different permitted and conditional uses. It would add adult daycare facilities, assisted living facilities, doggy daycare, fortune-telling businesses, recreational instruction facilities, shooting ranges, and waste treatment and storage. Each would be variously permitted as permitted or conditional in different categories. I'm not going to go through the details of that. It also makes a modification to the sign regulations. We've had a number of variance requests in the last three or four months for businesses like Dunkin' Donuts and Wendy's that have asked for additional signs. The planning board has been comfortable with those variance requests, so we're basically incorporating those changes into the code, regulating more on the total size of signs permitted and less on the number of signs. So, for example, Dunkin' Donuts had a slogan that they wanted on the side of the building, but they were only allowed one sign, so they couldn't do the slogan and the Dunkin' Donuts sign. This would allow them to have both as long as the total square footage isn't exceeded. So those are the significant changes here. We did talk at ordinance committee about the also the addition of homeless day service facilities. That ordinance committee wanted to think through and talk through a little bit more, so that was pulled out of this modification. So this is just for the categories are previously discussed. Planning Board recommended unanimously to support these modifications to the zoning ordinance.
Thank you. Is there a motion to suspend this ordinance for passage tonight?
So moved.
Is there a motion from Alderman Marsak? Is there a second?
Go ahead.
Second from Alderman Marsak. Roll call.
Jones. Sorry. I'm good. You take it.
Aye.
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 13I zero X.
Is there a motion to suspend this ordinance for passage tonight?
So moved.
Is there a motion from Alderman Marsak? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there a second from Alderman Marsak? Are there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobs.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarres.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Oseka.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Root.
Aye.
13I zero X.
Ordinance is approved. Item 7B.
PV 2024-2-7, an ordinance approving a map amendment to rezone portions of South Greenwood Avenue, East Merchant Street, South Chicago Avenue, East Bourbon A Street, and South Dearborn Avenue from commercial to residential zoning.
Mr. Altman, do you have the speech down?
I think so, Mayor. We've done this a few times. This is one of another of the continuation of cleaning up a zoning map essentially, right? Properties that are zoned commercial but have had homes on them for quite a number of years. It is changing the zoning from commercial to residential to match the existing use of the property. There are a number of properties along Dearborn, Greenwood, Chicago, and Merchant that fell into this category. And so the planning board held a public hearing on these last month and recommended their approval, so.
And there is at least one home or two homes that are waiting on sale?
That is correct. In both areas, there's there's one, well, one is waiting on sale, one is waiting on a refinance to remodel and improve the property and they can't get the refinance loan without having the proper zoning, so, yeah.
Is there a motion to suspend the rules for passage of this ordinance tonight?
So moved.
Is there a motion from Alderman Baron? Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second from Alderman O'Brien? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobs.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarres.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Oseka.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Root.
Aye.
13I zero X.
Is there a motion to place an ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
Is there a motion from Alderman Baron? Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman O'Brien. Any questions or comments? Sing done, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobs.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarres.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Oseka.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Root.
Aye.
13I zero X.
Ordinance passes. Item 8A.
St. John Paul II Catholic Parish is requesting permission to host their Corpus Christi procession on Sunday, June 2nd, 2024, from 12:45 PM until 2:30 PM.
Is there any motion to approve this request?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Swanson. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a second from Alderman Marsak? Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobs.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarres.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Oseka.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Root.
13I zero X.
Request is approved. Next is standing committees, item 998.
Building and code for Thursday, February 15th, 2024.
Alderman Lewis, do you have your time?
Thank you, Mayor. The meeting, the building code meeting was called to order on February 15th. We approved January bills, I mean minutes, then we approved January code bills for the month for $2,980.07. We discussed gravel and the committee requested for the engineer to plan a DPW ESU to present to provide data to clarify how gravel affects the sewer systems. And the committee clarified that the gravel concerns are pertaining to pre-existing gravel cases, but noted due to the increase of residents requesting gravel, the committee should revisit the ordinance for discussion. Also discuss legal animals. We were informed that in-house counsel has a list of farmers that will take animals on emergency and interested farmers should contact attorney landward to be included on the list. We discussed campers at 690 North Evergreen, the lengthy removal process and the conditions have worsened. Then a new camper was established at 746 North Evergreen and both are in need of removal. And Director Nelson explained the removal process and committee discussed suggestions to possibly improve or expedite the process. Had new software and Director Nelson reported that the new software app will be live in mid-March and offered all the persons prior access to navigate the app prior to implementation. Under Alderman questions and concerns, Alderman Marsak was questioned if the animal control was picking up cats and Director Nelson reported that the policy hasn't changed, but code can call for an injured cat. There was no need for executive chat session and we adjourned to 6:20 PM.
Item 9B.
Economic Development for Thursday, February 22nd, 2024.
Alderman Cobs.
Thank you, Mayor. The regular meeting on Economic Development Committee of the City Council was called to order February 22nd at 5:38. There was a quorum present. There were no public comments. After a voice vote, the amendments were approved. Director Brewer Watson provided her director's report and described new development inquiries as well as an update on present development and locations throughout the city, including 57 new businesses opening within the city and multiple grand openings. Additionally, Ms. Brewer Watson gave an update on business inquiries for the city of Kankakee. Business retention has been restarted, which has been on hold since COVID. More reports will be given on business retention at future economic development meetings. ECDMA also assisted business with acquiring conditional use permits and other business needs. Ms. Brewer Watson also spoke on the River Edge Redevelopment Zone informational session that was held on March 28th. The application process for Kankakee Works is closed for now and will potentially reopen once the present applicants have been reviewed and what funds are available. Ms. Brewer Watson gave an update on Riverfront Society and pledges that were made. Full director's report can be found on the website given in your web in your email. Regarding 505 South Skyler, Mayor Curtis discussed the terms of the agreement between the developer and the city of Kankakee and updating the TIF agreement for the best interests of the city of Kankakee. CVB Representative Nicole Gavin gave a presentation on the restructure of Visit Kankakee County, Kankakee County Provincial and Visitors Borough. There was no need for executive sessions. Alderman comments, many compliments were given to the ECDMA team for all their hard work. Upon a motion by Alderman Malone Marshall and a second by Alderman Tolly, the committee adjourned. The next meeting would be, oh, the next meeting was March 28th. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Cobs. We'll move on to item 10, Report of Officers. Item 10A.
City of Kankakee bills in the amount of $562,042.
Is there a motion to approve the report of officers for the city of Kankakee?
I'll make the motion, Mayor, to approve the report of officers. Let's pay the bills in the amount of $562,042. I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Swanson. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Osinga. Any questions or comments regarding the environmental services utilities? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobs.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarres.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Oseka.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Root.
13I zero X.
Request is approved. Next is item 10B.
Enviromental Services Utility Bills in the amount of $325,672.92.
Is there a motion to approve the report of officers for ESU?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Swanson. Is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Osinga. Any questions or comments regarding the environmental services utilities? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobs.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarres.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
and offered all the persons prior access to navigate the app prior to implementation. Under Alderman questions and concerns, Alderman Marzak, uh, was questioned if the animal control was picking up cats and Director No- Nelson reported that the policy hasn't changed, but code can call for an injured cat. There was no need for executive chat session and we adjourned to 6:20 PM.
Item 9D.
Economic development for Thursday, February 22nd, 2024.
Alderman Cobb.
Thank you, Mayor. The regular meeting on Economic Development Committee, uh, as a city council was called to order February 22nd at 5:38, uh, there was a quorum present. There were no public comments. After a voice vote, the amendments were approved. This Brewer Watson, Director Brewer Watson provided her director's report and described new development inquiries as well as an update on present development and locations throughout the city, including 57 new businesses opening within the city and multiple grand openings. Additionally, Miss Brewer Watson gave an update on business inquiries for the city of Kankakee. Business retention has been restarted, which has been on hold since COVID. More reports will be given on business retention at future, uh, economic development meetings. ECDMA also assisted business with acquiring conditional use permits and other business needs. Miss Brewer Watson also spoke on the River Edge Redevelopment Zone informational session that was held on March 28th. The application process for Kankakee Works is closed for now and will potentially reopen once the present applicants have been reviewed and what funds are available. Miss Brewer Watson gave an update on Riverfront Society and pledges that were made. Full director's report can be found on the website given in your web, in your email. Regarding 505 South Skyler, Mayor Curtis discussed the terms of the agreement between the developer and the city of Kankakee and updating the TIF agreement for the best interest of the city of Kankakee. CVB Representative Nicole Gavin gave a presentation on the restructure of visit Kankakee County, Kankakee County Provincial and Visitors Bureau. There was no need for executive sessions. Alderman comments, many compliments were given to the ECDMA team for all their hard work. Upon a motion by Alderman, Alderman Malone Marsh and a second by Alderman Tully, the committee adjourned. The next meeting would be, oh, oh, next meeting was March 28th. Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Cobb. We'll move on to item 10, report of officers, item 10A.
City of Kankakee bills in the amount of $562,042.
Is there a motion to approve the report of officers for the city?
I'll make the motion, uh, Mayor, to approve the report of officers, let's pay the bills in the amount of $562,042.
We have a motion from Alderman Navarez, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second from Alderman Lewis. Any questions or comments regarding the bills for the city of Kankakee? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
I but I abstain is to check 82156 to Court Street Ford, check 82179 to Katie Coffee and Tea Company, checks 82191, 3695, and 1403 to Pigash Engineering, and check 3693 to Gordon Electric to avoid a potential conflict of interest.
Prue.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Bills from city of Kankakee are approved. Next is item 10B.
Environmental Services Utility Bills in the amount of $325,672.92.
Is there a motion to approve the report of officers for ESU?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Swanson, is there a second?
I'll second that, Mayor.
We have a second from Alderman Ossiga. Any questions or comments regarding the environmental services buildings? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
I but I abstain is to check 34724 to Baron Hewitt Oil Company, check 3473 to Gordon Electric Supply, check 34745 to Kankakee Truck Equipment, check 34746 to Kankakee Valley Construction Company, each to avoid a potential conflict of interest.
Prue.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
The report of officers for environmental services utility is approved. Next is item 11, under unfinished business, 11A.
An ordinance amending the fire prevention and production code by adopting the International Fire Code and otherwise updating chapter 14 of the Kankakee Municipal Code.
This is on second reading, uh, this was sent back at the first reading back to ordinance committee, which was reviewed at least last Tuesday night. It was recommended by the ordinance committee to bring it to full city council for second reading. Is there any questions or com- well, let's start with Chris here. Uh, we do have a bond, we have in-house counsel on landwear here, Chief LaRoche here. Is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Ossiga, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second from Alderman Lewis. Any questions or comments regarding this clarification? And we do have, uh, people here that have, they have, there was a piece regarding new construction. My understanding is that was taken out at this time and we discussed it a later date.
Correct.
Seeing no questions, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance is approved. Next is new business, item 12, 12A.
An ordinance amending chapter 5 Amusements of the Kankakee Municipal Code by adding a new section 5.05 prohibiting electronic sweepstakes machines.
So this, um, has to do with, we currently have our video gaming that's allowed in the city of Kankakee that is required to have a liquor license component to it. Um, and then with that liquor license, an interstate liquor license, they also, uh, have a fee that is attached to those machines in about $20, $50 each of those along with their liquor license that they pay. Uh, these, this is a loophole within the state system for gaming, uh, that has been being taken advantage of across different parts of the states. We had a situation in Kankakee where the establishment without a liquor license had brought in what they call the sweepstakes machines and were running them. Uh, the concern we have is they're not regulated by the city of Kankakee. Uh, they're not paying a liquor license like the facilities that do have, they're actually not paying the gaming taxes of the city of Kankakee in the state of Oklahoma. It's basically a loophole in the system there. The state has not corrected that, so at this time, uh, we, uh, in-house counsel, landwear, have worked with some other municipalities on some that they have passed. This is basically prohibiting any of these sweepstakes machines from being operated in the city of Kankakee. So letting the game, the gaming machines, again, there's a path to that and that is having a liquor license within the city of Kankakee or actually having a port license. You must have a port license, which is your, um, class A or your class G restaurant. Also, you, if you are a truck stop facility or a gas station facility that has over three acres and you discuss diesel, you're actually not getting permission from the city, you could go straight to the state for that. But there was a concern that we had a lot of people that are going through the proper processes and paying the proper tax fees to the city of Kankakee, and so we want to connect this in place and prevent this from basically popping up in any type of establishment, whether it's a retail store or, uh, any type of business we have in the city of Kankakee. If there's any questions or comments, they have to answer or this may be answered elsewhere. If that, is there a motion to suspend the rules that would interfere with the passage of this ordinance?
So moved.
There's a motion from Alderman Navarez, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second from Alderman Lewis. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Even though I don't believe this is video gaming, I know, I'm gonna abstain just due to the potential conflict of interest.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, one extension.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved, Mayor.
There's a motion from Alderman Navarez, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second from Alderman Lewis. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Abstain.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, one extension.
Ordinance passes. Item 12B.
Ordinance declaring certain property surplus of the city of Kankakee and the Kankakee Fire Department and authorizing the sale thereof.
Is there a motion to suspend the rule that would interfere with the passage of this ordinance tonight?
So moved, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Ossiga and a second from Alderman Navarez. Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Is there a motion to place this ordinance on final reading for passage tonight?
So moved.
A motion from Alderman Navarez, is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a second from Alderman Swanson. Any questions or comments?
What do we surplus on?
Uh, some, I'm trying to watch you kill the, uh, side show, I don't know. Uh, here is, uh, some weather gas girls at the fire station houses and some patsy bits. Sorry, Chief, I had to.
Action, really.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Ordinance passes. Next is item 12C.
A recommendation to approve CDPG Public Service Subrecipent Award recommendations for fiscal year 2024, 2025.
We have before you, it looks like we have, uh, four entities that were awarded here. Is there a motion to approve your ready additions?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Baron, is there a second?
I'll second that.
There's a second from Alderman Swanson. Any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
Recommendation of the CDPG funds is approved. Next is item 12B.
Recommendation to approve revised local public agency engineering services agreement for the Riverfront Trail Improvement Project.
Mr. Pigash, just a quick overview of where this is located at and what it means to the city.
Yep, thank you, Mayor. Um, this is actually related to the Riverfront Trail Phase 3A project that the city got, um, a second ITEP grant for in 2022. Uh, we had brought a combined engineering agreement from the selected consultant, which was V3, back in, I want to say mid-23, um, for the balance of the Phase 1 engineering as well as Phase 2. IDOT came back, said they didn't want to approve a Phase 2 engineering agreement until the Phase 1 had been approved. That has now happened, so we're now bringing their Phase 2 agreement, uh, before you tonight for approval. Um, the resolution for both agreements was already approved back last year, so we don't need a resolution for MFT for this.
And this is at no cost to the city, this is a 100% grant funding, correct?
Correct, yep. This was a, uh, a grant, ITEP grant where the state covered the match for the city and this was in the same cycle that, uh, South Skyler Avenue, um, improvements also got an ITEP grant where the match is covered by the city, so.
Is there a motion to approve the recommended revised local public agency engineering services agreement?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Jones, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second from Alderman Noble. Is there any questions or comments? Mr. Pigash?
Just to clarify, this goes from the, I should have stated this earlier. This goes from the existing pedestrian bridge that crosses the river and heads south along the east riverbank through, uh, Kankakee Valley Park District's Fisherman's Park. And then there'll be a switchback ramp that goes underneath the Court Street Bridge and then it'll continue along through Alpine Park and then through the city property and connect into Station Street, so.
Seeing no questions, roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Aye.
Prue.
Aye.
Thirteen ayes, zero nays.
The, uh, recommendation is approved. Next, we'll move on to item 12E.
Recommendation to approve engine, engineering proposal from Pigash Engineering for the 2024 Parking Facility Maintenance Program in the amount of $16,950.
So this is for Pigash Engineering to oversee your, see the seal coating of many of these, uh, city parking lots. You're gonna see this when we get to item 13 on motions and resolutions. I think the last time the city did any seal coating, uh, any city parking lots was 2016. It's typically something you'd like to do every three to five years, so we're well overdue. So this is, you'll see the bids that came in here in the next part. This is for Pigash Engineering to oversee, uh, what they did was the bidding of the project along with the construction and completion of the project. Is there a motion to accept the recommendation to approve the engineering proposal for Pigash Engineering?
So moved.
We have a motion from Alderman Lewis, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second from Alderman Navarez. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call.
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarez.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Tully.
Aye.
Osenga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Abstain to avoid a potential conflict.
Prue.
Aye.
Twelve ayes, zero nays, one extension.
The recommendation is approved. We have no appointments tonight, so we'll move on to item 13, motions and resolutions, item 13A.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Kankakee Valley Construction Company, Inc. base bid and alternate bid 1 for the 2024 Parking Facility Maintenance Program.
You should have in your packet there, this, uh, bid was, as mentioned, awarded to KVCC, they were the low bid. Uh, there was a base bid which did the parking lot of Clock Tower behind there. Also behind Apple Auto Parts, um, at the Merchant Street Music Fest. We'll see that is actually more than a seal coating, that needs a lot of repair to the asphalt and that is all included in this project. If that calls parking lots, not only does it include the crack routing of cracks and the seal coating and striking of the parking lot, it also includes, uh, any major repairs that can be done to deteriorated asphalt. Am I saying that correctly, Mr.?
Yeah, that's correct, Mayor. We have, we have some padding included in, as needed in some of these parking lots because it was just in, beyond the point of being able to seal coat it, so.
We've also, base bid part of that also was behind First Trust Bank. That was crack routed in 2016, it was never sealed. And then, uh, we did accept the alternate bid, which is the Jimmy Johns parking lot, uh, just off Court Street to the Midwest of Jimmy Johns. Again, also that was crack routed in 2016 but never sealed. We did have two alternate, um, uh, three other alternates. That was Rigo's Parking Lot, the Public Safety Center Parking Lot here in the Farmer's Market. We feel the Farmer's Market is in really good shape, uh, but our goal is in trying to be, uh, prudent with our capital dollars that we would do base bid and alternate 1, uh, tonight, which is a total of roughly off Court Street to the west of Jimmy John's. Again, also that was crack routed in two thousand and sixteen but never sealed coated. We did have two alternate, three other alternates. That was Rico's Parking Lot, the Public Safety Center Parking Lot here in the Farmers Market. We feel the Farmers Market is in really good shape, but our goal is in trying to be prudent with our capital dollars that we would do base bid and alternate one tonight, which is a total of roughly hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. And then we will target the next fiscal year, next summer, doing the rest of it. So is there, again, before we go through it, I just kind of say this a little thing you've heard me say before, not the sexiest of projects to spend some money on, but it is a big deal to get these done so that we can prepare our asphalt, keep our parking lots and for our rest if things are in good shape moving forward, so.
I just wanted to mention too, we do have this completion date set before Merchant Street Music Fest. I'm sure everyone was probably thinking that, and I think, I think this is a good route because this addresses all of those parking lots along the tracks there, so I think, you know, we should be in good shape for a few years to come at least, so.
Is there a motion to accept the low bid from Kankakee Valley Construction?
I'll make that motion, Mayor.
We have a motion from Alderman Tolly, is there a second?
I'll second.
A second from Alderman Johnson. Is there any questions or comments? Roll call?
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarres.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Holly.
Aye.
Osanga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Abstain to avoid a potential conflict.
Prue.
Aye.
Twelve i zero nix, one extension.
Resolution is approved. Next is item thirteen B.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Langloy Roofing, Inc. bid for the hydroelectric plant roof replacement.
So as you know, we're trying to work on all aspects of getting the hydro plant back up and running. One of those is to repair the roof, which has not been repaired in well over twenty years, many years. We did go out for a bid on that. This will be utilizing the ARPA allocated funds for the hydro plant. We did receive seven roofing bids, and the low bidder was Langloy Scrupping in the amount of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. We're actually pretty excited about that bid because we thought it could be much more than that, so, you know, it's a real good number, and it's a local company, so we're good for us. Is there a motion to accept this resolution for the low bid of Langloy Scrupping?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Swanson, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Marzak. Any questions or comments?
Just looking at the bids, I'd like to know how many square foot it actually is because they're, they're all over the place.
Oh, old math. I'll tell you real quick.
I, I did the math, but it just, none of them make any sense actually, but we'll take the low bidder, which is, you know, at the nine dollars a square foot, which is like sixteen, seven thousand square feet.
Seven thousand square feet?
Yeah.
Does that sound right?
That sounds right.
Any other questions or comments? Roll call?
Jones.
Aye.
Noble.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Cobb.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Navarres.
Aye.
Marzak.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Holly.
Aye.
Osanga.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Baron.
Abstain to avoid a potential conflict.
Prue.
Aye.
Twelve i zero nix, one extension.
Resolution is approved. Next is item thirteen B.
A resolution authorizing the acceptance of the Langloy Roofing, Inc. bid for the hydroelectric plant roof replacement.
So as you know, we're trying to work on all aspects of getting the hydro plant back up and running. One of those is to repair the roof, which has not been repaired in well over twenty years, many years. We did go out for a bid on that. This will be utilizing the ARPA allocated funds for the hydro plant. We did receive seven roofing bids, and the low bidder was Langloy Scrupping in the amount of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. We're actually pretty excited about that bid because we thought it could be much more than that, so, you know, it's a real good number, and it's a local company, so we're good for us. Is there a motion to accept this resolution for the low bid of Langloy Scrupping?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion from Alderman Swanson, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Alderman Marzak. Any questions or comments?
Just looking at the bids, I'd like to know how many square foot it actually is because they're, they're all over the place.
Well, old math. I'll tell you real quick.
I, I did the math, but it just, none of them make any sense actually, but we'll take the low bidder, which is, you know, at the nine dollars a square foot, which